Your agenda and.
Motion to approve agenda minutes.
A second.
Been moved in second. And for discussion. There are none. Both same sign.
Rich, morning. Difficult maintenance stuff going on Rockland still running. We did get Wheeler Woods finally painted so that project's closed. We. Didn't plan on putting a lot of rock down the shoulders, but I estimated that it's not compared to the project we already ran it because we were. Can't ask me to just maybe put three down instead. So not a big deal there. So that's open backup. I've got a, I got an email last week. You guys remember, I don't know if you remember title six. We're gonna have a title six. Review with the US and pin up here soon. So I'm gonna try to maybe get caught up on the title six stuff. So we might have some things we need to change because I think the last title six. Thing we did, we had a different chair every time. I need to remember to do this every year is to make those changes with the chair person. I wish there was a different way we can do it, but. It's kind of silly the way they do the title six.
If you hit it right, maybe my chair.
Well, I waited long. But no, I, I know. I think I've got AJ on it from last time. So yeah, I might have to try to update some things. I want to try to be motivated by it. I know. I already had the review done in Mitchell County a few years ago. And it goes, okay, it's just time consuming and it's something I don't want to take the time to do, but we have to be compliant with DOT. So. That'll be coming up. I'll try to get some stuff to you guys. And then I'm going to be trying to get some plans turned in for. Our next paving project is using federal aid money now. The swap is gone because of the new bill. But now we got to web federal aid. And that's going to be from three ninetieth north to one oh five on Drush. So we're gonna get that project put through the system. So I gotta try to turn some stuff in the next two weeks to get the preliminary stuff done. So that's the next project. The. The bridge on Tildere at the, I can't remember the name. Water area there now, but they're waiting on some the shop drawings for the steel and stuff. So probably late, mid, late August when we do that bridge. That's all I got for you this morning. I'm gonna be. Maybe this, this week I might be a little scarce around here. I've got nobody in Mitchell County. And I've got some paving going on over there. So I might have to spend some more time over there this week. You guys will have my phone number. I'll be. I'll be back and forth, but I'll probably do some majority of the time over there this week.
Good. All right. Yeah. Anything else, Rich? Thanks, Rich.
Thanks.
All right. This is making the drainage.
Yep, we have the assessments. Values and assessments. It's just the, the annual assessments that she prepared.
Right.
We need to like re- remodel for. Awesome room. Yeah. All right.
Water.
Just said one more thing. Don't have. Stumbled out on thirteen and forty-six, but we're closer than we were because we're gonna have a meeting. So.
That's good.
Those will be special with the valve and how to do.
Recurring good.
No, finally know how much they owe.
Okay. That's good. Let's start.
So we just need a motion to approve the resolution.
So I'll take a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three drainage assessment.
I will make a motion. I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Over.
I.
Stone.
Hi.
So maybe. Motion will carry.
We think we'll sign.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Ready to get chance to look at the claims.
They can bring up something I'm bringing you to see where you, you called about that those twin pipe.
Oh, yeah.
Over there and we, just so the rest of you know, it's, it's on Deer Creek that, that. There's twin culvers running underneath. I think it's the four eightieth.
Four eightieth of the May. I can't remember what one was.
It's, there's some pretty sizable pipe there and the bottoms are rusted out. They were rusted out when they did the wind tower project too, and we kind of monitored them. They didn't move, but they're getting bad. Just so you know, we've ordered the pipe to replace them. We're gonna leave the, they use the. The pipe run underneath the road at a certain grade, and then they have actually a drop down structure in there and those pipe are okay yet. And it's where they tie in and drop down is not underneath the roads. We're just gonna replace it with some new road for now. And if anything in the future happens where those other parts run out, that's not new road. It's not a big deal, but we do have them ordered. They've been ordered for a while. We just haven't gotten them yet. So once we get them in. We'll be doing that. And then I should have brought this up too. The pipe at one oh five and Vine, we've been, it's kind of pavement's kind of settling there for a while. We do have that pipe getting delivered here soon too, and we're gonna jump on that right away. So. One oh five might be closed down for a short period of time. In the near future. Just wanted to keep you guys up on grams. That was one of those, it was one of those tip projects. We were gonna, when I did that tip stuff, those pipe were part of that. But I'm not gonna wait that long. So. I don't notice. I drove over it this morning. I don't notice anything in the road right now, but I, you know, a couple of recycles and, and anything that happens, there isn't gonna be a catastrophic failure because pipes don't collapse. Catastrophically, you're gonna slowly see that happen, but we'll get them fixed here.
Yeah, you just had a concern.
They're bad.
We know about it. Yeah, at least.
They're not really.
We've been working on it soon.
Just wanted to update you on that.
Okay. Sounds good. Ready to get chance to claim them? Any questions? Take motion to approve the claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims or a second.
Second that left.
It's been moved in second for the discussion. And no, there you say hi.
Hi.
I would go same same motion.
There's a couple of there.
Oops, sorry.
I'm not.
All right. Take the motion to approve the payroll. Claims.
Long may the third payroll.
Sure, sir.
I'll second.
Move in second. Discussions. I.
That.
What seems to me. Motion case. Look at this. These news. It's firework for best.
Yep.
Uh, and fun fireworks family.
Okay. It's out of standby.
Oh, okay. Fireworks permit.
I'm making most of fireworks.
There's a second.
So say.
Moving second and any further discussion, you're not always very say hi. Or some sign motion. All right. All right. Well, Melissa, I guess you'd be up or. Or yes, man.
I'll just go start here. You were asking how the county passes the resolutions, working the home base Iowa initiative. And it's the. Uh, one, it's the first step in a process. So today is just basically passing the resolution and then. If you have any questions here. Answer. Iowa is.
Okay. Well. Maybe you want to just explain it a little bit. I guess.
Sure.
Talked about before.
Yeah, and I definitely add some handouts if you'd like on, on the program, but basically I'm Jayden. She went on the program manager home base Iowa. Home base Iowa, it's an older program. Some of you might have heard of it before. It dates back to about twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Was a initiative champion by our policy, uh, action general and governor and still championed by our governor. And say action in general today, we're a one of a kind public private partnership that connects resources and opportunities with veterans and their families here in Iowa. So really there's a workforce piece which is huge, right? We're trying to help. Veterans transitioning service members and their spouses find meaningful employment right here in Iowa. I imagine there's workforce needs here in the county here and of course in Winnebago as well. Um, the other piece of that is we partnered about twenty nine institutions of higher education, which is often the first place that many veterans. Reintegrate back into civilian life because of the GI Bill and other things. And then the piece that really ties it all together is the home base Iowa community piece. And we have about a hundred and nineteen. Uh, this will hopefully be, you know, a hundred and twenty here, um, as we work in this one hundred and twenty-one. Um, we're really focused though on the counties right now. Um, because we don't have all counties on board and we want to be able, as we are trying to recruit veterans and our families from outside the state to the state of Iowa. Help fill the skill gap and say, hey, Iowa's a great place to work, live and play. Um, we want to send that message that no matter where you end up in Iowa, you're gonna be connected with the, the resources and the support to call Iowa your home. And I want to just really give mad props to Melissa for helping champion this. Um, because she's like, uh, looking at some incentives. What we found is some of the rural areas aren't really doing anything that's really that meaningful kind of attraction stuff. And I want to say I, I, I'm doing a lot to really. Um, really kind of reengage this program and really make it. It is absolutely meaningful for the communities that are involved. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. That's just kind of my quick spiel. Um, again, if you want. Um, uh, one of these, it just kind of talks about those three kind of areas of focus. But you know, Iowa also has like, for instance, a five thousand dollar. Um, homeownership program that's administered to the Iowa finance authority. Uh, we've awarded well over like six thousand of those grants. So that's very meaningful. So some counties are actually doing above and beyond that. I know you're looking at like a relocation grant that could help. Um, and a lot of the companies, if you have big companies in the county, they can really add value to that as well. So I'm, I could talk all day long about this, but I see that you guys are. Getting stuff done fast. So I want to take your time.
I'm not gonna rush anybody through that.
No.
I appreciate that.
Then, uh, you know.
One of my goals is to finish the two counties and then I'll go to all the city council meetings and chief of cities. Girl in.
Work for some businesses maybe and you know.
Yes, it's a great program.
Yeah, we started what two years, three years ago. We started.
I saw a documentation from Teresa two thousand and fourteen.
Also, even before I got. Cause I know, I know we talked about four units.
Yeah. What the resolution does, and we always start there because what it does is it just says from you guys to say, hey, we support this. It makes, it kind of clears the waters. It allows us to do the work to really engage people and say, hey, this is something that's supported by leadership. Let's make it happen.
When it realizes, you know, just stuff to stay tuned and then we can pile on top of that.
Yeah.
Then second, so that's good. All right. So we are, there isn't any more questions. I guess we are looking at a resolution here supporting Iowa. Supporting the home base Iowa initiative. So the resolution is, where's the question?
Where's the project?
Well, this is different. All right. We got the official. Okay. Resolution supporting the home base Iowa, Iowa initiative. Where, whereas the office of governor of the state of Iowa has launched, launched a public private partnership called home base Iowa initiative. Which is an effort to match military veterans with jobs available across Iowa. Whereas Iowa home base. Iowa initiative consists of two programs, home based Iowa businesses and home based Iowa community, communities. And whereas the governor Reynolds is requesting Iowa businesses and communities to promote and support the home based. Iowa initiative. And one of the requirements for it to be a home based Iowa county is board supervisors adopted a resolution of support. Whereas the Worth County Board of Supervisors finds this. That it is in the best interest of. The county of Worth and veterans everywhere to support the home based Iowa initiative and adopt this resolution. Now therefore it is involved by the county of Worth, Iowa as follows. Section of Worth County. Section one, the, the county of Worth hereby complains it supports the, the home based Iowa initiative and encourages residents to take whatever actions are necessary, necessary for Worth County to become and continue to be a home based Iowa county. The county of Worth also encourages Worth County businesses to take whatever actions are necessary to become and continue to be a home based Iowa business. Worth County Board of Supervisors and the Wind Work Vetco Executive Director are authorized to take such further actions as may be necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of the resolution. All resolutions, orders or parts thereof in conflict here will are to the extent of such conflicts hereby repealed. And this resolution shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption and approval. All right. So I will take a motion. For the resolutions for the Iowa home based Iowa initiatives.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I will support that.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none will do a roll call vote. Over.
I.
Stone.
Hi.
Maybe I, the resolution will pass.
So none of it's.
That's one of the steps that will be, that's like step four. They'll be sort of, you'll be getting, uh, home base out, that businesses engaged, but there are already, we've already met that kind of requirement. So then. Uh, step four, I'll provide that contact information. And then I don't know if you'll be involved in that, but we'll work with the DOT to put those signs up. You'll identify where you want them. Usually major.
That's what you, and I think that's a good proposal. I'm just trying to figure out.
What ages that some year.
Should be all, I, the only thing that I've seen missing is maybe one on the east side off highway nine coming in.
Okay.
On here, but you know, out of those, those are the major highways, I will only have, we'll contact, even the DOT will be contacted for. You know, most of the signs we have some, I don't know if you guys that, we'll talk before too, when you want more on some of the low roads and not. Coming in, but those are the good ones. Those are good.
When they're about seventy bucks.
And they do a man house DOT. I'll give the contact and then.
They'll make it.
That DOT will make the signs. You guys will have to pay for them. So as many as you want. Um, and then identify that and then they'll get you kind of hand it off to a local technician that will just make sure that where you're proposing, but um, he's in accordance with all the regulations.
I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to remember how we, we did it in Mitchell County. I remember we placed the signs in the DOT right away or we, they did it. We just told them where we wanted it and then on ours, we'll put them up.
Well.
I think.
I don't have the answer to that.
I think they did their own right away.
I can't remember in Iowa. We all do things.
We coordinated with them.
That's right. I'm learning that, but you guys are great. This is awesome. So thank you so much. And. I'm very excited to, to help move you guys forward with this. I think it'll be a big win. For not only your county, but for the state of Iowa as a whole and for our brothers and sisters making that transition.
He will be here until tomorrow morning. Anybody have any questions?
Awesome.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Melissa, you want to do this first? Kirk connections not here.
Not here yet.
Not there.
You can draw a rap on the genome stuff.
Yep, that's what I was just looking at. So okay, department, anything from department heads?
Well, not a department head, but a contract liaison. Um, been trying to go telephone. The phones are pretty much done. Um, they're probably gonna put a couple in here after today, just so people can come in, take a look. I know the nurses have had a couple up and running in their office and they had some, uh, suggestions that.
Are they more user friendly and.
Absolutely more user friendly.
Yeah. It should be, does Enus need special training?
So I've got Enus enrolled in the five day program.
You know, our day.
With meals and hotel.
Well, we're not, no, we don't have the budget.
Oh, okay.
Joel used that one out.
Yeah.
The only thing we're waiting for is a nine one one integration with Central Square. They've got a, a small box that integrates with the SIP system. And they're having some configuration discussions on. Yeah. So.
They actually have.
Give what you want. The box is here.
Okay.
Box is here. They're just trying to figure out the best way to integrate and. Um, as soon as that is done, then we can pull the trigger on the new system. Like I said before. This is not something that we can just do department by department. We've just got to go ahead and rip them all out and put some new ones all that. But it, it's going well. That program is going well. Like I said, duo, we've had a few little bumps and bruises here, but I, for the most part, it's going pretty, uh, pretty smooth. And I'm gone Tuesday through Thursday this week for ISAC board directors meeting, but I will be available, be able to call or anything else. Um, and I'll just report back to Jackie as far as hours spent. I don't know if you need preapproval on anything like that, or just I, I pretty much told everybody thing.
She told you to stop, don't stop.
Yeah.
I will go ahead and do that.
No, I, we gotta, we got stuff. We gotta get finished up. So we don't, we don't let this go takes them.
Do whatever you want to do. But mostly the break back stuff. You know, I know Teresa's got an issue this morning. I was gonna take care of, I've got a couple laptops of public health that I want to wrap up and finish up. They're, they're about done. Um, might guide them through the, the, uh, the iPads that they're getting in there.
That's a renewed, yeah, for the matrix care system.
Yeah.
They're mandated.
No, but other than that, we're, we're pretty stable, I think, across the board. I don't think we've got anything really big or huge coming in.
Good work. Trying to find a replacement.
Yeah. Yeah. What's the deadline? I guess what was the deadline on that?
Today.
Yeah, we got a couple came through after ten o'clock last night.
Nice. There are some applicants there though.
For total.
And I've got the, at least two ICAT folks that can be involved remotely, you know, uh, yeah, I'll talk to Jackie about it, but. If we want to send those applications to those individuals and have them. Um, you know, say whether they want, you know, who they, who they would recommend interviewing or they would not recommend interviewing. And then they can sit down that, that interview process.
Good.
All of your camera stuff showed up and you there when we unloaded.
Yeah.
Um, and then after that, we had. Another, I don't know if you're looking for it. You might want to go check. We had one spool of something show up in another box that I put down on top. I don't know. Perfect. It was the same order or not, but you might want to check to make sure because it was addressed to you, but they delivered it upstairs.
Oh.
Welcome to the shop or the garage there and see if there was something we're looking for that.
I, I know.
It was a pretty light box and other spool. I just figured it. Set up.
You will spend the money on that.
Um, the, the equipment, yeah, a lot of the Bercata equipment did show up, uh, Friday.
Yeah.
For this project. For, for you.
Yeah.
Already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was two pallets.
It was on its way before we approved it.
Had the labels on it.
Pretty much.
No, it was pastest delivery we've ever seen.
It's, it was.
It's nice to see that we're getting it all. Well.
Yeah.
Said they added on the shelf.
So the, the process of that will probably be, uh, SCI will come in and do some wiring. Um, for the doors and the new camera locations. I, I imagine that will be done first and then each of this will come in and, you know, start putting stuff in place. So yeah, we should. It, it's happening a lot quicker than I thought it would too, but, uh, I know they said they, they had the equipment on hand.
Yeah.
Now your computer stuff is updated by then.
Well. Hopefully this will be a good for a couple of years.
So I've been on the show for ten.
That was this guy.
Have an analog.
Right, yeah.
Right.
How do you know it's not?
Oh.
Uh, probably have been bigger pallets.
Are you saying you'd set up that one?
So question, what is the protocol then going forward as far as, okay, do we need to let Jackie know, hey, we got this type of an issue going on? Who reaches out to Joel? You know what?
Oh, I don't.
I do.
Go to Joel.
Just go to Joel.
Just. I get a little upset at two a.m. by just that.
I just thought I would ask. I assumed, but yet.
I.
Need to be clarified, I think.
Yeah, just go directly to him and.
Okay.
Cause hopefully it's safe. You know, it's not like it's gonna be an everyday, all day. Be, I'll just be getting this here and there, I assume.
Right.
Break fix and then everything with the project is working right now.
Yeah. Your office has a problem just wrote to, his email's still active.
Email and, and the cell phone, I will carry. The, uh, and that is one thing. My cell phone is still underneath the county right now. Um, and this week when I'm down at, uh, Boarding Tree, we will get my phone transferred outside. Yeah, it will still be the same number though. But it will be transferred done. So. You guys are gonna cover me for a couple of days on the thing.
Yeah. That's fine. We. Don't have anybody. So it's not like we're. Changing a button, you know.
Baby steps.
Yeah.
Maybe so.
Yeah. And that's like I said, Isaac said, as much as time as I need to give you guys that they're.
Appreciate that. Okay.
So we won't start TP in your house or anything yet.
I moved. You move around a lot.
Dan's got a detective.
Yeah.
Can't, can't hit a moving target. Well, there's something.
I didn't realize he had two officers per neighbor. So.
Racking it on both sides.
Anything else from department has?
Just a question as far as the registers. I know the guys were around putting the parts on. Um. We have parts sitting on our cell phone in my office.
They were.
Are they not done? Do they?
Do they look like new parts?
Yeah.
Well, then I would say they're not done.
There, I know there was something they still had to order.
Yeah. So. You sent us that, yeah. So maybe that's.
And I just told them to go ahead and do it because we need it.
We, we're gonna have to have heat by winning.
Yeah, maybe.
You guys. Maybe they didn't get back or something.
How big is your basement?
Right next to the beer fridge.
That's not good. Okay, anything else? Maybe, I mean, I guess there's parts laying there. There, these are installed. So I mean, you know, they must have.
Because I did.
I think, yeah, I was waiting for something. I saw that email. So.
So that one's not done yet. So.
More likely than whatever he's waiting for is probably part of it's in your office and somewhere else. So. Yeah.
It's missing something.
Those look.
Hopefully it gets there before Thanksgiving.
They look like.
They look plastic.
Oh, I'm sure there.
Well, that's different.
The knob is.
Yeah, from here this way is everything else is.
Must be really.
So hopefully it actually works now. So that means we should be able to adjust the heat. I don't, I don't run by radiant meters, but. It was immediate.
We, you're supposed to be able to adjust them.
Oh, I think yours is.
I don't think it worked.
And this one, the rest of them, no. I think that one and that one are special, but the rest of them, we can't.
See the hundred and ten down here.
So you can't value yours up there.
As far as I know.
Really?
Yeah, these are different.
That's why we always had our windows open. Can you dial yours now?
Yeah. But these two are different for some reason.
That's the way they're zoned or.
Where there's a ridge.
Yeah. Well, I know this one's kicking out a heat. Or else it's just hot down here.
All right. Super close weekly, I guess.
The only thing I had this week were. North Iowa Children's Alliance and basically was just to finish out our contract with Mercy One. Family connections and home business. And we got that all done and figured out the start date on it. So that's what I had.
They do.
I didn't have any last.
We started quarterly. Our workforce meeting. Something major going on there. Just went through all the reports and stuff and then attended Mr. Gold's.
Return. That's right. Honestly, forget that, Mckay.
Yeah. My go away party. All right. So I guess we will just be recessing right now until they come. Our connections.
This was very reconvening.
I did.
Oh, you did. Oh, okay.
Sorry. Means I didn't do it in mode and I just heard me.
I hear that one.
Protocol. No, you were maybe right when I said that. So I'd say whenever they're ready, they can.
Okay. Here. All right. I have some things for you. Charge. Those and then I'll give you. If you like one too. He doesn't work here.
I don't work here anymore.
I was here. We're here. Sometimes.
So I have extra copies of any of these I want.
Well, thank you all for having us today. Appreciate being able to be here. Um, I thought we'd start with maybe just some introductions to get started. That worked. Um, so I think most of you might know me, but I'm Melissa Lear and the CEO of Care Connections. And I'm Jen Blake Jordan. I'm the office and finance specialist with Care Connections. I am Anna Miller and I am. I have a high issues. So this is. It's not very pleasant.
We all have those after the weekend.
Right. Um, Sandy Keldner is our other coordinator. She had a meeting at eight thirty, so she was going to try to get here as soon as she could afterward, but, um, she did advise me that it was a pretty. Uh, kind of a crisis situation, kind of getting some things sorted. So she may not. Uh, kind of a crisis situation, kind of getting some things sorted, so she may not get here in time, so. Um, anyway, and she is our children's coordinator for Worth County as well, so. So, yeah, so I thought it was time to, um, we've been so busy, wanted to get over here and share an update with what we've been doing, um, who we are, kind of get you. Meet the team and let you know what we've been doing in your your county. Um, so I have. Two items that I, well, maybe three things I kind of wanted to go over and that's what we have in front of you. Um, I won't. Spend a lot of time on. Um, one of the items, I'll spend as much time as you want, but. Kind of what my agenda is today is I have um the first document, this goes over kind of what we've been doing the last six months. Um, for through kind of your board meetings administratively, um, what regions are hap- what's happening with regions. So I want to go through that with you. I think that's where you're gonna maybe get the most clean, most the most information that can be pertinent to you. Um, the second document I have um right here is our annual service and budget plan, and so that's for FY twenty-three. Um, so that just um basically states what our initiatives are for this next year. Um, what we're going to be doing as far as funding, where we've implemented that funding, so if you were walking a couple. Lines into this, maybe starting on page ten, it'll talk about who we're contracted with for services. And then how much money we have budgeted for each item um for services, so we don't budget um county by county. We budget all across the whole region, so. Um, that's that's money across the whole region for that services, so I could talk more specifically about that. Um, but again, I I I thought the the majority of what we wanted to talk about is this other area. And then the third item that I have in front of you, um, this spreadsheet is our mobile crisis um information, so. Wanted to talk with you, um, and we'll probably talk to you maybe a little bit more about mobile crisis and what they've been doing and how that's been implemented. Um, but wanted to show you, um, this document right here is from the lie, mobile crisis in Worth County started July first of two thousand. Twenty-one. And so we've had a full year of that, and so the number of calls that have come in, I took off. I tried to take off any um really identifying information, um, so you wouldn't be able to um. You know, know exactly who, um, but yeah, I have some of that additional information, so I'll share that with you guys as well. Okay. Um, so to get started, I'm just gonna go through this uh Care Connections administrative highlights, you know, if you, I'm very visual, so I feel like. People should have things in front of them. Um, so what we've done since October, November, December, um, MHDS regions, as you're probably familiar with, um. They changed the funding last year, so we went from having a county property tax levy to a state appropriation. So FY twenty-two was an interesting hybrid year, um, where we had a combination of county property tax dollars. So at um when we originally, before we knew that this was even going to be a thing, um, when we had our board meeting through the governance board. Um, we set a levy and then the state automatically lowered that down to twenty-one dollars, and so that that occurred. And then the state kicked in fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents on top of it in FY twenty-two forever in in our region. Then FY twenty-three started, so now we're up to um the state gives us thirty-eight dollars this year for capita. Um, prior to that, the max that our region could um have for a levy was thirty dollars and thirty cents, so. By that already, we've increased, you know, the revenues that we would um obtain from that, so that's been good. We've been able to do some um additional implementation. Within that period of time, kind of the history of Care Connections region, they were always very um conservative, just like most of us are, right? With our dollars and not knowing where our dollars are gonna come from before that and always being a little skeptical and shy of the state and and following through with what they say. So Care Connections was always um very conservative with their budgets prior, um, and in with the state guidelines, they also mandate what our fund balance needs to be. Um, so this last year, they mandated that our fund balance has to be below forty percent of our expenses. Um, and so that was a challenge. I'd say what a good problem. I think you guys all had the same problem and FY twenty-two with money. That you had, we're told to spend, um, we were in the same boat too, so we needed to look at spending down. Um, because what would happen if we did not spend um down then, um, the state implemented what they call also an incentive fund, so if you. Are above that threshold of that percentage at the end of, uh, when you go to certify your budget, the next year, the state would automatically take either withhold funds for you. That they would be sending you, or um then you'd also have to face a pace, uh, face of pay payback of those as well. We did not want to see that happen. We wanted to see your local tax dollars staying local. Um, so the board very aggressively worked through that budget, um, worked through implementing some grants and you'll you'll kind of see me um talk about that throughout. Um, and you'll see where that money went, where the dollars went, um, and all of that, and AJ stood stood on our. Grant committee to help make those decisions as well, and we can talk about that as well.
And he kept telling us that he was trying to spend money.
Yeah, spending money like crazy, yeah, we did. Um, and so, so the first um area just kind of talks you through what our contract looks like with DHS, so. Um, rather than be reading it, I'll just tell you a couple of major things. Um, A, the key word that I thought was important is partnering with DHS, so. Um, I really come from the realm of we're gonna partner and we're going to provide services together rather than pin against each other. So we're a partner with the state now, which I think is a good thing in that way as well, because the state also now, um, our success is their success, and so they want to see us successful. And they have some of the tools with the department behind them to help us implement um some of the things that we want to do, so I've seen that to be very helpful. Um, the other big thing that we're doing is we're we're doing a deep dive in the system analysis. Um, across like all of the services that we provide, being able to collect the data so that we can streamline the information. Um, a travesty I started in April two thousand twenty, and so I had kind of fresh eyes to that, and I looked across the regions and went. Okay, we have fourteen regions. Which is great, it's better than the ninety-nine, having ninety-nine ways to do things. Now we have fourteen ways we do things, but that's still too many ways to do things. And so between regions to regions, there was still inconsistencies across that, so. We've been really working hard hard with our partners to, you know, kind of remedy those things, but then create a basis and a structure of how we're going to do things moving forward. Um, how we track that information so that obviously we create that baseline, so we know how to build on that, so that's what we're doing. Um, Jen has really, as our office and finance, she spent a lot of time in that data element, tracking that, and so that's a lot of moving forward. What we're doing is the services that we've implemented, we're tracking and we're we're trending those and seeing where um. Where we can remedy things, what services we can put in, what we can implement, and then how we build onto these services, so that's a lot of what we've been doing. That's been a lot of work groups, um, kind of early on in the state of developing those tools that we're asking our providers to use, so. When I say that, um, I'll use the example of mobile crisis. Um, before, every mobile crisis provider across the state had a different way they collect different information and send that into the regions. So everyone was collecting different information, so we'd say, well, how long did one take to dispatch? Well, I don't know, they collect that information. We need to be able to report on that, so just really becoming standardized in everything we do. Um, so you'll see on the first page, um, with the contract, um, they're bulleted, and that second point, um, reduce emergency crisis usage. Improve the use of mobile crisis, improve jail diversion services and employment outcomes. Those are some of the major things that um the state is looking at and we need to implement. Um, so I can talk through uh some of that other, but I'm just gonna kind of move on. Page two talks about the performance measures, so um what, how do we get graded? What does our report card look like? So, um, page two talks a little bit more about that report card, so we have quarterly reports. That we send into the state to track um our our services, if people are accepting those services according to Iowa State, Iowa Code Standards. Depending on the service that looks for mobile crisis, that means that when um a referral is made to mobile crisis, then they're gonna dispatch. That dispatch team has to be out there within sixty minutes. Um, if they're not and they have a delayed response, then they need to be in communication on why. That happens sometimes where a rule where you, um, they may be out on one call and they need to, you know, have another team come out, so sometimes there's some delayed responses. Um, but ultimately, there shouldn't be. For the other services that you'll see kind of midway down, um, that are bulleted, these are all of the core services that. The state says you have to have, you have to have access to within your regions. You don't have to have it necessarily in your region, but you have to have access. And some of these services have to be accessible within a hundred and twenty miles and a hundred and twenty minutes. Not every service, but I'll give you an example, crisis stabilization, community-based, and crisis stabilization residential services. So once a referral's been made to that, um, within a hundred and twenty miles or a hundred and twenty minutes, we need to have that accessible. So we have that all mapped out. We have Worth County mapped out and how far um our our agencies that we contract with that territory, what that looks like. How long it's gonna take to get people there, and then we work with our providers through like our mobile crisis team and things like that to let them know, okay, the region's contracted with. This provider for this service. Um, that's always great when we can get people into that. Sometimes it's still a rat race or still um not enough. I mean, that's it, we're getting more beds, but sometimes you still gotta, one's bed's full, so you're calling to the next place and you're calling to the next place. We're still working on developing. But we have it all mapped out, we have, um, Worth County has access and the ability to all services. And I'll talk about in just a minute a service that we're building in Spencer, which is going to be kind of um in that area. Uh, a hub for some of those crisis services that will extend for the region, so we're we're implementing kind of a virtual access network for how we're gonna run those through. So I'll talk about that in a second. And then the very bottom talks about DHS contract responsibility, so obviously they have some skin in the game as well. So I'm gonna just stop here for just a second and just, I know that's very high level, a lot of information. Any questions at this point and? Okay, well, I'll keep moving, so we're on, um, I guess it didn't mark on page, I did, page three. So I'm kind of up to February of this next year. We started of this last year, started working on the budget around that time. Um, so I talked, that was obviously really significant because that's when we really were looking at our funding and how we were gonna spend some of our fund balance. What services we need to still implement, and then what we were gonna do with the remaining uh with the remaining funds. Um, in April, so we had talked about that, um, in April, the board released the impact grant. And so that was um up to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, we wanted to grant up to a million dollars total, but a provider could write up to three requests for up to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, underneath that, you can see six areas that we had asked them to write in for categories, example, um, improving access to mental health needs for adults. Children, implementing additional services, accessibility accessibility of facility improvements, working with individuals with homeless, and then. Um, work for shortage strategies as well. Um, so I'll talk about that in just a minute. I'm kind of uh giving you a um a scope, so in April, we released the grant. Um, and then in May, we saw those applications come in, so I'll talk about that when I get up to May. April sixth, you're gonna see some pictures there. We had a um board training available to all boards and supervisors in April at Palo Alto County. Um, and so um that is something that just talked about regional services, so what services do we provide underneath our budget? What's supported community living? What's community-based crisis stabilization? How do we implement, and what are the data in our service coordinators like, look like? How do they refer services and things like that? I'm trying to give you a picture of what it looks like in the community, um, to um. Provide the services, have the services, and just kind of give you a better understanding of what those are. Um, in April, April is a busy training month as well. In April, we had Solution Point Training come out. Um, and they are Jesse and um. Joe, I always want to get around, um, and they are two um cops. They had, did you go to that?
Actually, I sent four people to it and they said we need to do that again and make it mandatory for all my guys to go to it, so if that's something we can bring back, they would love it.
We are, yes, so um the excitement, so yeah, so that was just a very small glimpse of, um, these are two gentlemen, they're the. Crisis cops, it was an HBO documentary, they're from San Antonio, Texas, and it talks about how they have a mental health, how they're basically mental health officers. And how they work with mental health um differently on the streets, how they do things, and so. This was just, I always say this, this, what we took them to and brought them in for was like the, they're like dangling the carrot. It was screening the video, getting them a chance to kind of introduce them to the concept of. Um, what they call the intercept law enforcement um model, so maybe not jail all the time, but how do we divert that? How do we do it a little bit differently? So it was exposing them to that idea, um, and then the the next part, and we've contracted all MHDS regions that contracted. With these uh this um agency to provide CIT training, so crisis intervention training across the state. So they're contracted to the FY twenty-three to do nine trainings across the state um in different locations. And then the others, they're contracted for twelve total, nine will be across all the different regions, and then the other three will be um at the Law Enforcement Academy. So they'll be training the officers right there in the academy, and they'll walk out with that training. They're also gonna keep a database of all the officers across the state that have been trained and managed that, so um if an officer, you know, say from Worth County goes over to Dubu. That training will follow and they'll have a database to make sure that, you know, they they track and trended all of that as well. Um, so we're not scheduled until our region is scheduled in October of two thousand twenty-three for our training. It just happened to be, you know, we have to take our pick across the board and because we just had them come up. Um, that's kind of how we got on the rotation, but I will be sending out those rotations to all of our regional officers, um, law enforcements, because. Just because it may not be in our location, um, it could be Mason City, you know, right next door, and so we're, it's the ability to have nine trainings. Or more across the state is so that officers can go to whatever training they need to go to. And the model, which was not done before, it's also, they're gonna do a hybrid model, so especially for law enforcement, rural law enforcement. That if they can't attend, I think at least ten percent has to be in person, but if they can't attend, then they have the ability to be able to do some online. Um, and. Do it in the time that it's, it it stops, you know, so it's interactive and engaging, so that's exciting. Um, in May, so I'm gonna just keep jumping on, and maybe work towards, um, again, budgeting, um, we. Big thing we did is, we had at that period of time, we had about three million dollars in excess, um, that we needed to spend down. For to get to our forty percent um fund balance um this last year, so um, one of the big things that the region needed is we did not have. Some crisis services, um, some were still a distance away. And when I say that crisis residential is is one of the probably the biggest highlights of services, um, that's where someone can stay. In um a place for anywhere from three to five days, that's voluntary, when they're experiencing a health crisis. Um, that's probably one level of care that's most sought after. Um, and one of the levels of care that ish that I, in our opinion, I thought issued the most denial. Um, and so we've been really working hard at working with the providers to engage them on why, working on some um quality assurance things with them to figure out. And and moving forward. But the other aspect is, we also wanted to be able to have it available, um, where we had a little bit more control over that and have the ability to have it. Internally within our region. Um, and so I'll be honest, the the two big providers we have within the region, we have Seasons Center, the Mental Health Center in in um Spencer. And we have Prairie Ridge, the Mental Health Center in Mason City, Berry Hills and and, you know, kind of in there, they trickle a little bit into Cassoue County, but they don't have. Probably the same amount of services that Seasons and Prairie Ridge has, so those are the providers that we had really tapped into to work on development of services and things like that. Um, so as we continue to work with them, um, Season Center, um. Net, they, we share Season Center with Sioux Rivers, the Mental Health, um, a region just off to the um west of us. They were interested in working with Seasons Center, had some proposals out for crisis residential, so it just seemed to make sense at that point as the board talked through it. To team up on that, work with them, um, to create um some sort of crisis services in the Spencer area. The nice thing is, ideally, Palo Alto is kind of the central location of our region, just because we are so strong out geographically. Across the state, Palo Alto, Cassoue tend to be. Issue is, we don't have a lot of providers in there that can provide that service. Um, in in that area, so Spencer with the hospital, Spencer Hospital being there, they also have the mental health unit right there. Um, that seemed to be a good location, so Seasons Center had uh worked with us with the other region as well to put a proposal together. Um, to get crisis residential beds, so they'll have two twenty-three hour observation and holding. So when someone goes, they can um drop them off there, they can be assessed, and they can determine what level of care they need, they can stay for up to twenty-three hours. And they're just with an assessment, at that point, they can either discharge home if needed, they could go to crisis residential, so that's maybe just like one step up from there. Where they can stay up to three to five days there, and then the next level of care if needed is is subacute, it doesn't have to go in that order. Subacute is the one level of care we don't have i- in our region right now. Um, there, there's not a lot of subcutes right now, um, the two that would be the closest would be either Waterloo, um, Ames. Um, Woodward, and then there's one in Sioux City, so um we're working on building more capacity of those as they're coming up. Um, but right now, we have the ability between some agencies, um, between, again. Sioux City being in some of the more western areas, Waterloo being here. Um, but for the example is when they go to a subacute, they stay anywhere between five and ten days, so. When we know we're making a referral to subacute, we know we're not putting them in the car to turn around and come home. So it doesn't feel like it's a wait, you know, like it's wasted time on the road for our officers or anything like that, or for the staff, we know that they're gonna be going, so. Um, I think that makes uh everyone, while we want to do better, that makes things a little bit better, where we're not um putting people in the car. Driving them and turning them around, yeah, so there, there's a little bit more sticking, I guess, that they're staying and they're they're getting treatment when we have them get on the road. Um, so we did that, so um we utilized, um, the, that came in about two million dollars because they needed to rent a big building, they have a lot of work to do on that. Um, so we worked with them, and so in red there, you can see I described out what the services are and what's gonna be available. Their hope is to be open in January of this next year, um. Their hope is to be open in January of this next year. Um fingers crossed because they have to do construction. So um we'll see how that goes. Um in May, we work on um our contracts for this next year. So I just listed out all of the contracts we have with providers. Um on this page, this isn't an all-exclusive list. If we just have maybe one or two um clients that receive services, we don't necessarily have a contract with a whole agency for that. But these are the ones that we hold contracts with for our services. Um and the services that we connect them to. Page six, just moving along. Page six talks about, um this is then we he um met in May and like I said, AJ was part of that group. Where we met, we reviewed all of the um grant applications. We had um twenty-three agencies ask for funding. We granted twenty-two out of the twenty-three, not always that the full amount, because our our request came in a little over, actually four point one million dollars. We approved um one point one million. So we achieved the goal. Our goal was to hit about a million dollars in grants and we hit that. Um so that left about three million dollars um of unapproved expenses. So um that's exciting in in that way that there's a lot of needs. We were able to um make a pretty big impact with with that amount of money. Um and so you can see throughout there, um the one thing I will, I will mention is our request. We always try to publicize everything as equitably as possible. So you know, um the one thing I always hear is east, you know, east and the west. Well. We don't ever want that to be something. And so um but providers, the shortage of providers in this area is is it's true. I mean, there's just not the same amount of provider. Um you have really good providers, just the level of number that you have. So there wasn't the same level of requests that came in from Worth and Winnebago counties. Um but we really tried to look at that um and hopefully AJ can speak to that. We we truly try to look at what came in. And how to best um be efficient with the dollars and put the money back into the community. So you'll see Prairie Ridge got a pretty substantial grant. Um and because they talked about providing services in Winnebago and Worth County. And so that was a key area to work with them on, on getting services in Worth County for you guys. Um and so we had gone back to the table with them a couple of times to have them expand, answer some questions. And talk more about how we can have that ability in your.
Yeah, when we gave that grant, it was, it was a big push to get Winnebago and Worth uh better services over here. And we just made it pretty clear to Prairie Ridge that if we give you this money to utilize, to build up the programs. We don't wanna see it just stay in Mason City, because that's a different region that's, you know, we contract with them. They do take our patients. But we wanna see it promoted this way, Winnebago and Worth as well, because it needs to. So.
Absolutely. Um so so that is, you know, that's, and a lot of that, what theirs was, was more on a um. Helping with the child psychiatrists to get that and that level of care into here. So that's huge, because um children psychiatrists are just really far removed. Um in between. And so they'll have the ability to provide telehealth. Um I know Prairie Ridge, who started with um. In the school system at Northwood, things like that, putting some um school-based services in the school. So really trying to provide. That level and really trying to do it on a preventative side as well, because if we can get the kids when they're young and work on their mental health. And we just keep that moving forward as they get to adulthood. Um and then um the very last page on this, we we also have a a means for special project request. So um anytime that uh an agency. Uh when we don't have granting things open, we get lots of weird requests. I'll be honest with you. We get requests for lots of things. And so we just created a process to formalize that. So. Um some agencies that they have a need, they would write to to the region and say, this is what we need. So an example. Um Horizon, they're out of Palo Alto County. Um one of their vehicles just was getting really old and kind of bad. And so they matched. They said, hey, if we match ten thousand for a vehicle, will you guys help match us as well? So we can transport clients. So they wrote up the request, took it in front of the board, and that was something the board was able to do. Um you can kind of see an example, Palo Alto Hospital wrote for some of the helpers' training books. Um Season Center had written for respite, school-based services, um therapy supplies. And so that's an open. Um basically an open application that's on our website that we've made available. In our contracts as well with all of our providers like Prairie Ridge and Duncan Heights and all of them. We also have the ability within our contracts, we have training dollars available to them for their staff and for the community, for community training. So we've tried to really implement um that when you're, not only are when you're part of a region. Are you part of a a network of other providers and a team of like a mental health collaboration? But you're also, we wanna say you're also entitled to some funds that that being part of a region should be a good thing. And you should, A, know you're part of a region. And maybe there's some benefits to that. And so having some training benefits and having some of that, it only makes our providers better. And it creates um a better working relationship with them. So we have that all built into to some of our more um major contracts with our providers. Um and then I also, just on the last page here, this is all of the staff. So you can see we're a small but mighty group. Um so this is all of us here um with our contact information. And so we're available at any time, email, phone. You know, feel free to give us a call and and you can see um who we are. So. That being said, um that takes us through really the last, on my side, the last. Year, almost six months to here. Um so I'd be happy to take questions um on my side and I'll probably turn it over to Anna and then.
I wasn't at the last meeting um with the vacation. Did something get figured out with Spencer Hospital or Palo Alto?
Yeah.
On that deal they were trying to bring into all the schools, all the school districts through the entire region.
They got it in uh eight out of the, you remember, I'm trying to remember, they got eight out of the. I think they got all six counties to um do it. So they did grant it um for, I think it was up to, they this, so the proposal changed up to sixteen thousand. Which it would. And so um essentially, we were talking about Palo Alto Hospital had wrote a special funding request. I haven't seen it yet, but the movie McFarland USA, I guess it's a um movie, but they have a individual that it's about track and cross-country and mental health. And things like that. And so they have an actor that is speaking on mental health and he is really engaging to youth. And so Palo Alto Hospital is bringing him in. Um originally, they asked to be able to just speak to Palo Alto School. They came to the region to say, hey, can we have money for that? You know, it relates to mental health. And our board in their um infinite wisdom said, that's really great, but can you do it all over the region? And so challenged them to go back and reach out to the school. And so now it's implemented. I think she was having a little trouble. Um just contacting school throughout the summer, but I think she got six. Um all, every county will have it available in their school. And that would be in the middle and high school. Yeah, so.
Well, I say that's, that's kind of where we stick is, is if somebody comes in with a request. And if it's just for counties over that way or counties this way, we try to incorporate it. Is there a problem of making a region-wide thing this way? Our region, all of our people get equal, you know, equal treatment, equal. Training, equal everything. So um that's, that board is really, really good for that, to make sure that everybody gets a piece of the pie. And it's been, it's been going really good.
And that's what I always wanna make sure that you guys know more than anything, because you know, I know the the past has been, oh, it's always over, you know, the services aren't in your community. And we're trying like hell to get that. And we're, you know, um. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time, you know, it's, there's a culture that's here and trying to get providers and get just, you know, get that development up there. And we're working towards it and it'll take time. Um you know, but it's, and I think it's part of it again, it's it's important with our providers. To have some things that are contracting to let them know that there is something that the region offers. And that you wanna be part of this region and you wanna have a relationship with us. We wanna have a relationship with you mutually beneficial. And the more that we can do that and know that um our providers know that they have some backing and support and technical assistance. That creates also a level of um um where providers are willing to work with. You know, as well to provide more services and go on on a limb, because. They're not getting a lot of money. Medicaid's not paying them very well. Anytime that they are getting whatever money that they're getting, it's normally they're fighting for it. And so. Um to to be a region and to say, well, will you do more with less? Will you provide more services, you know, and and do this? It's a big ask for them. So the more that we can do to um create those relationships, to me, relationships are first and foremost. So if we can do that. Um then the rest is pretty easy from that point on. So. And there's Sandy, Sandy, this one, and I don't know you're gonna be at a home visit here in town. So, yeah. So I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna let um Anna um take over. Um just to talk a little bit about um actual services in Worth County. Um talk about what you've been doing on the children, kids, I don't know how much time you have without. Um and then maybe have, and then I would just like Baby Jen to talk a little bit more about our mobile crisis and what she's been doing and kind of um things like that. So.
So one of the things that, so Sandy and I actually just started, um she did. Do a training with the Michigan Committee. I wasn't able to attend, so I'm gonna let her fill you in on that up here in Worth County. Um we tried to make that connection for about a year and we knew that they had all our supplies with that. Um but we had never actually been able to speak to their group. So. Um with all the farmers and the the timeframes and things like that, but Sandy, so Sandy was able to speak to their group. Um that's a long ago. I'll have a group tell you about that. One of the things that we're working on. So um we are right now. So Friday, we are gonna participate in the Board of Health, the um Worth County Board of Health meeting is Friday. So. We've also invited Irelie Ball, our mobile crisis. So the one that usually comes um and does some speaking for us, her name's Carrie Lehrer. She is actually um also the supervisor of all of these managers um over Irelie Ball. So she is. Extremely knowledgeable, super great gal, and um has really made herself available to be able to come to all these. Um all these groups that Sandy and I participate with. So. Um I'm hoping she's at the Worth County Board of Health meeting, but I wasn't gonna hold her to it because she also did write, right? So she since came up, right, right? And we do have another meeting set with um Worth Community Health. So with public health uh next week. So I told her, well, can't make it on Friday, you know, well, she'll definitely be at the public health. Uh meeting with the nurses and things like their staff there, because one of the things that. So now it has been a year and. There's a lot of groups and a lot of providers and a lot of people out there to meet. So we do just kind of take it. Once we start with one group. We'll do, we'll kind of do the same thing. We'll do the same group, you know, region-wide or at least in our counties. So we're doing, um we just got done with Cassoue Community Health, Irelie Ball came in. Um and there's different things that, so what Sandy and I are doing actually is. I'll let Sandy talk a little bit about the kid side of things too, but with the adults. Either way, what we're doing is reviewing, we are reviewing our intake process for care connections with just our intake demographic sheet. Um oftentimes, we may just get the phone call and say, hey, you know, can you meet with this person? Well, by doing that, that's not a really good tracking mechanism for us either. And you could, you know, we, we could get several, several calls. And be working on a number of cases at once. Um. And so by just utilizing our intake demographic sheet, it's the minimum, you know, information needed to upload in our system. Um that's much, a much better and more accurate way for us to keep track of, you know, who are, who are we meeting with, where are we sitting? And who can we, we refer them on to. So um we're reviewing our intake demographic forms. And then because the main funding stream is actually IHH or what's called Integrated Health Home. Um we are reviewing the IHH referrals depending on, you know, the county of origin. So if it's Worth County, it would be IHH through Prairie Ridge. Um IHH for Cassoue, well, both Winnebago and Worth would be Prairie Ridge. And Cassoue was actually very no unity point out of Fort Dodge. And so we're kind of reviewing the IHH referral processes for those two uh providers, because they are the A number one funding stream. Um so what I've kind of done in the last, in the last several months. Is as these referrals are coming in, if the provider themselves can do the referral to the main, to the um. The provider of the IHH funding stream, those services get to the client a lot quicker. And then we have more time. To get to more people. So the process works very, very well. It's just a matter of really, really having the provider that they become familiar with that. And the processes. So um that's where, that's where it's great, because in a lot of these cases, it can be two, three, four, six-month wait. You know, for these individuals who are really in need of services. So um. And then the third thing that we're covering on the Irelie Ball side of things and why we really have Carrie Lehrer there to speak. Um. You know, both for advisory board and for our stepping up um for the law enforcement. What we're doing is we're taking certain pieces at a time. Otherwise, it can be extremely overwhelming, way too much information out the door it goes. So um one of the things that Sandy and I and Irelie Ball are focusing on are really educating people on the community-based. Crisis stabilization that is actually offered um. Through Irelie Ball, but there's another, you know, in interior provider through them for the referral. For the community-based crisis stabilization, which is also three to five days right in that individual's home. Um so, and then you've got the institutional base, where the institutional base or the residential. Um crisis stabilization from three to five days. In some cases, it can be up to ten. Oftentimes, we'll have that person that's ready to discharge on a Friday afternoon. They don't feel great about that. They're saying, oh, weekend to be like those. And so we're not feeling good about that. So they'll reach out to us, regional coordinators, say, how are you, you know, this is how we're feeling about things, you know, what do you think? If we keep moving the weekend, great and fine. Uh because as long as they're, but you know, they're mentally stable. We wouldn't want them really to be poor and unwell, you know, so. Um so that's a couple of things, because we also realized. That through the mobile crisis, now that we have had that in place for a year, that with the, with the community-based crisis stabilization of that ivory. I'm straight up, we are pushing community-based crisis stabilization. There's two reasons for that. Number one, we realized it was extremely underutilized, because we've only had one. Um in these counties to the east, and we've actually only had one actually good counties to the west. Um not enough. That, that is clearly not enough. But one of the, one of the best, one of the best um things about the community-based crisis stabilization. Is because when they're coming into the home for three to five days, whether it's for an hour, whether it's fifteen minutes, it's so much more than a phone call, right? And so you're there and you're making facial contact with that individual. And if you've got facial, you know, what do you, you're building trust. So really, in order to really build that trust with those members in your community. You wanna be seeing them on a, you know, longer periods of time. So it's not like, oh, I'm gonna give you a call in twenty-four hours. Then you get the case management for thirty days, but there's really not a whole lot to do. So a lot of it's being done by phone and you're not having that, you're not having that face-to-face contact. Therefore, it's a lot more difficult to build trust. So if, if people. So when I visit with Carrie Lehrer, I'm visiting with Irelie Ball, I'm stating. Almost admise, every single time, a party of two, the party of two is dispatched. And that person is a crisis to the point where these two counselors are coming out to the community and they are coming to the home. Almost every single time that service should be being offered to that individual, depending on the need there, there is something. You go through. I don't know why they fail or whatnot, but it's like. If, if they're in crisis to the point to meet with two licensed counselors. Every single time that that service needs to be being offered, you know, because. Again, that's how you're gonna build that trust. That's how you're really, really gonna get to know that community. It isn't through phone calls. It's through those face-to-face interactions. And Irelie Ball is coming up, by the way, with um. So each one of their staff members will have photo IDs. So they will have photo badges. So that when they do cleansing, they will be recognizable. So law enforcement feels a little bit better about who is this person.
They don't come in like mobile crisis cars.
They don't, you know, they don't have uniforms. But it is a way to easily identify these individuals. So even they feel, can feel better about it. You know, they're not only, it's a family member that was called that showing up or. You know, you just don't know. So that is within the next four weeks, actually, that they're all gonna have their photo badges. So. So that's a couple of things that we're working on is to community health, coming back to the table with them. Um because this, you meet, you know, you meet with an entity once a year and or even once every six months. You know, it's either an overabundance of information, so they really don't know what to do with it many walk out the door, you know, um. The referral process is gone, you know, still, I think, extremely well. So now it's just kind of fine-tuning it, you know, so we still don't have those individuals that may or may not be pulling through the cracks. Um. And again, it's just, you know, getting their feet in the door, you know, I mean, they already have their feet in the door. It's just hooking them up with with the correct processes. And um it's just educate, 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 you know, and. And it works very, very well.
Can I add something? You made me think about this. You're talking about adding things. I just wanted to make sure it be added. Um that within the region has implemented uh within the last year, I think it was. Um that all of the regional hospitals have access to ITP. It's um I integrated telehealth partners. So for um any hospital that wants the ability to um. Sign that. So basically, it's with someone goes into the emergency room. In a hospital in a small community that doesn't have a psychiatrist or anything, they can schedule an appointment, um fill out some paperwork, they can schedule an appointment. Um, on, online, and they can see a psychiatrist, um, via telehealth, so it's not perfect, I know it's better to have a face-to-face, but. To get a psychiatrist in Northwood, Iowa, not always going to be a possibility, so what's the next best thing? We can telehealth them in, so we have that ability where, um, the region does pay for that, so that if, obviously their insurance is built, they have insurance and things like that. Then the other piece that's really important behind it is the bed finding fe- feature, so we pay for that regardless, um, if that, um, if someone. Is determined that they need inpatient level of care, that can be difficult to find across state, um, an opening, and that can take emergency rooms. Hours and hours to find, and then the interim, they're sitting there, and I'm sure your officers can speak to that, they sit there. While they're waiting, and that's not something we want to occur, so by doing this, um, they've found that rather than having several days, because sometimes people sit in the yards for several days. While they're waiting, um, that, um, they normally find the bed within several hours. Um, they have a tracking system, they can shoot it out, blast it out, and, and they have a way to communicate that. So it's cut down on the time that, uh, people are staying in the emergency room. The, and we also have it available in all of our regional jails if wanted as well, so, um, that they can also have telehealth, the inmate can fill out the paperwork. Um, talk about their symptoms, things like that, um, they can send that into the, to the jail administrator, the jail administrator can set that appointment up. And then they can zoom, um, right into the jail and, um, see the patient, um, prescribe medications, they're obviously. Um, aware of, uh, med seekers and things like that, um, and so they first, they can prescribe those meds, and then the region works with the, the counties as well. To then pay for reverse any of those mental health medications, so the idea is to, um, make them a little bit more pleasant while incarcerated. And then work on that, uh, consistency, so when they can get out of jail as well, um, already have some of those stabilization factors, so I just wanted to bring that up. Um, as well, because that's another huge thing that's, um, I think been occurring, um, those are just some other things that we've implemented to. Better off the community of Worth County and, and citizens. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
No, I think that was pretty much it, I mean, those are the three things that, you know, that are our goal, and that we're just, we're trying to cover right now, so. Um, Carrie Lehrer is also, and I'll let Sandy speak about that too, with youth mental health first, maybe.
So. So we just, um, have that in the works as we speak. Um, one of the things that we funded with our impact grant was youth mental health training, which is a way to train, um. Teachers or anyone who works with youth on the symptoms, signs and symptoms of a mental health crisis in, in a teenager. Um, and so that training is coming, right now, uh, we're looking at, uh, it being located in Manly. Um, for this area at the Methodist Church in Manly, right now, we'll see if that changes, they're still reaching out to the schools. Because we'd like to have it in a school, but in summer, it's hard to get ahold of school folks right now, so for now, it's, it's at the Methodist Church in Manly. So that'll be coming up here, I think in August, our target was right before school started, so that teachers wanted to go, they could get trained before school started. Um, so yeah, so that's one big project, we've kind, sort of, uh, from my perspective in the children's end. I've spent quite a bit of time doing the big picture thing, so youth, uh, first aid, mental health training, reaching out to the schools in Worth County. Um, met with the principal and the guidance counselor, um. And Iowa State Extension, the, uh, 4H leaders, those kinds of things to sort of do a lot of. Like Emma said, education of what's available, and then. I've also been spending quite a bit of time on individual cases, so I just came from a home with it just now, um. Where we had to, uh, in this case, be somewhat creative with, um, you. Melissa talked about how, through no fault of our providers, but they, it's hard for them with Medicaid reimbursement rates to come into the smaller towns. And not be just in Mason City, but through finding a retired teacher who was, uh, available to. Contract with us to do some job coaching, we're able to help this young person stay in their hometown and get coached right here. Um, in town, so, uh, we're, working on that, um, I had a case with Sheriff Fink a little bit ago, a couple months ago now, maybe, that. Dug in, working, um, to find an appropriate placement for a child that needed, uh, some crisis stabilization. Um, so i- in work with a Mercy Hospital with another, uh, child who was being discharged from, uh. A mental health crisis, so I've been spending a lot of time in those individual cases. Um, I would say probably more so than even the community outreach, I, I like both. Both roles, but you kind of have to go where you're most needed yourself.
I did tell me participated or you still get the mission ready.
Right, yeah, which is sort of then how we were able to. Get that as our first spot for the youth mental health, right, first aid training, because they, they knew what we were talking about, they were able to say, yes, we'll open up our church. Can have the training here, um, which was very nice of them, so.
And unfortunately, we're not, we were not able to attend, and we're in county prayer this year, but we did have a table, and I just missed you, I was trying to. And we couldn't see each other, of course, because it was raining, um, but there were, but I found it interesting because. You know, as we're there and we're, you know, I'm setting up the table or whatever, and the tablecloth and all the spices and things like that, like literally. Bam, people are like, I, I visit with Kathy from the Board of Health because she was there. And Kim, of course, through public health, was going to keep her on her table, and I had a box of slices to eat at the table. To restock as necessary, and I told her right away, I said, you're going to need to be restocking because I was already being hit before I even. I'm loaded the car, you know, to set stuff up, but. Um, because, yeah, there was actually a table up there next to me and actually given us waiver. You know, they have several kids and several questions and, you know, so. I mean, it was, you know, the information was there for them, you know, at least, so. Because we did have our business cards and brochures and that type of thing, but.
And last but not least, because I know we're running out of time here, I just wanted to, um, have Jen maybe just speak a little bit on, um, our mobile crisis, um, so. Though on the sheet that you do have in front of you, um, you have some information, you have the ages. But I was just asking if you could read out all of the, the counties, um, that, um, our mobile crisis dispatch has been out and then share anything first.
So over the last year, um, there have been thirteen calls, um. In, um, out of Worth County and, um, several of those, most of it was like six were out of Northwood. Uh, four out of Manly, and then Crafton, uh, Thompson. And most of those calls that come in, they are from private residents, or have been a couple that came from the, um, the jail, um.
Sorry, the Northwood one, likely why that one got on, it was a resident from Nor- or from Worth, but they were in Northwood when they dispatched. So that's why, so we would, we would go based off of residency.
And these are all dispatch calls, because this is not the total accumulation of calls, the total accumulation of calls is quite a entire, but.
They don't track, we don't consider a mobile crisis if they don't dispatch, but there's a lot of talk on there. Um, and so I will tell you one other thing, sorry, I have, I would say, and I'll let you go back, um, uh, the one exciting thing is that. Um, we always talk about, you know, the, um, being more short on providers over here, but I will say excitingly. Um, Kassuth went back to one where it's actually got their mo- their, um, community-based, um, crisis stabilization. Um, team up going first, so actually, across the state, there was, um. Irelie Ball was like the only agency across the state that was actually certified and accredited to provide that service, and so they started providing the service in April of two thousand twenty. Um, and they started in just a handful of communities like, I think Hancock and, um. One other, and then they added us on i- in July, so Worth County technically was one of the first counties across the state. That had crisis stabilization, um, community-based, so look who you guys, you guys were, um. For, for, for whatever that's worth, you may be feeling like you were last in some areas, you guys were well ahead of the game on that area, so. Um, yeah, like we said, we love to see it utilized more, we're working on that, but, um, and Jen does all of that tracking, we get those spreadsheets, and so I.
Yeah, and then, um, this, you know, mobile crisis really was the, uh. Really the pilot of the crisis services, and there will be, um. I'm part of a data analytics group, actually, Melissa, and, uh. We're really working to get the other crisis services up and going, there's. To make it easier, I think, with providers, really moving towards our mobile crisis way of collecting data sheet. And then there will be a, uh. Crisis, or a tracking sheet for all other crisis services. Um, and the hopes is that, you know, this will give us a baseline, and then we can use this information, um. To really drive how we do service and track, track what's really happening. So, um, tracking, you know, how quick those dispatch calls are and. How, um, individuals are moving between services, if they're going up or down in a certain, you know, in a service, crisis services. Um, this, these tracking sheets should give us a lot of information, um, and how to. Make services better, so.
And especially on that note, being able to see them go from. Different entities where, you know, mobile crisis, they go for mobile crisis, and in order to get into community-based crisis stabilization. The, there's a funnel, it's mobile crisis, you go into mobile crisis, they come out or they dispatch out, and then they offer you that service. Um, and so, um, making sure that those are always offered, and we have the right means, and that we're tracking them, but then, um. That, that if they go between several services that we're tracking, to make sure, so we're making sure that we're following up wherever they go, because there's an array before. It was one thing, it was, well, I don't know what to do, so I'm going to call the emergency room, or I'm going to show up at the emergency room, and maybe I'll get into a mental health unit somewhere in the state of Iowa. That's not what we're trying to do anymore, there's an array of services, so there's. You know, like I said, uh, there's the observation, there's a short term where you can do that community-based in your home. You can do it in a residential setting, a three to five day, I call it like a respite house, you know, you're going to go and get a change of scenery. Um, or you can go to sub acute, which is more medical, medically based, so. Or inpatient, so all different kinds of realms now than just a one, one route, and that's what we're trying to do. And that's a lot of education, because for how many years was there one door and it was police, ER? That's all people knew, now we have to re-educate everyone on how to do it differently. Um, and that's the trend, and nationally, you're going to see it, because now if you heard nine eight eight, that's the new, um, crisis and suicide hotline. Again, just trying to get things to think about differently, and that's a culture that is going to take a long time to break, and that we're trying to do. Um, and that we appreciate that we're able to do the work, and we appreciate, um, that you guys are able, that you guys have care connections in here. Um, and that, you know, we're providing the services that you guys want and need. Um, and that we're part of the community with you guys, and, you know, that we roll up our sleeves with law enforcement, we consider it, um. Our issue, we're, we are Worth County, and we want to stay Worth County, so.
I do want to say really quick to one of the things that I've had my own learning experience in last year is because with Worth County being a bordering county from Minnesota.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we've had a number of individuals that, you know, that cross, that cross that border, or some of them. Very good at what they do, sometimes when they're, you know, when they're dealing with mental health, and they know where to go for the court orders, where the court orders have to be dropped. And like that, and so you have those people that will switch, you know, um, from border to border, but at the same time. While they're busy doing that, I'm busy building that, those contacts and that communication. So like with Blue Worth, you know, you've got, I mean, you've got the DHS up there, I did find one residential facility actually on the Minnesota side. Where they can actually, you know, it, it, it ended up being a huge bonus, because I had no idea it was there. Um, and through my own health systems, I've had a lot of contact with their social workers, so, but there is residential. Programming there that is like a temporary or short-term, but we're talking not just days, we're talking months. So like, if somebody is trying to order up, and they end up in the hospital up there, they have a place where they can go. You know, to still receive the services they need for their mental health, and then we've even been able to send up transport. Get them on back down here, because here's where the court order lies, and they know it, you know, so. They may or may not like those choices, but at the same time, you know, they, they. It, it's been, it's been a really great learning experience for me and to be able to build that communication, that collaboration with the Minnesota side of things too, so. There are pretty awesome people out there too, and they know, they know.
I'm sure with, with way over time, and I appreciate caring, but happy to take any questions or, you know.
I'll just make a comment, I've been on board six years, AJ, you're about four years now, and AJ came in on the tail end of the. It was the end of the fight we were fighting, and we started this here, and I, I didn't sit on the mental health board, Kenny Abrams did, but. From the day I was elected and on, we've been fighting to basically either get out of that region or get services from that region we were in, and, uh. What I'm hearing and seeing, it's a, it's a one hundred percent turnaround, we really, I really appreciate that, so. Being able to find the services for the people, I think has been a big wonderful, and, and we just didn't have that connection when I first got on the school, and. And Sheriff can probably even elaborate on that, I mean, frustrations we've had, and. And I mean, people, I just don't think they even have a clue the services we've built, and so, and I think they're finding it there, so I really appreciate what you do.
One question. Anna, you're here again, I'm a big fan, you guys have done great, um, working with Anna and Sandy, they get my phone calls quite often, and I throw them curveballs, so. The only thing I have is my Sioux City trips, um, and I think you might have touched on that with Spencer, we're going to be going maybe to Spencer. Instead of Sioux City, or did I catch that wrong?
Um, so. So in Sioux City, what they're building in Sioux City, right, so the option that, let me go back, so the, um. Crisis Residential, which is a voluntary place for people, we have a couple of different options right now, there's one in Mason City. Um, there's, or the building, they don't want to, they have kids in these, sorry, I'm thinking, I have to think adult and kid services, so. Um, adults, we normally are using Saks City, um, at Turning Point. Um, they tend, or Waterloo tends to be the closest right now, there's.
We've been sent, getting sent to Sioux City, we just went two weeks ago again, and that takes one day, eight hours off the road.
From Mercy?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's different, okay, so if they're, if they're sending them into inpatient. Um, because that's an inpatient acute hospital level of care, this is a step underneath that. So if people can go to Crisis Residential, there are, which is a voluntary place, um, so it's. They don't meet inpatient level criteria, and they shouldn't meet inpatient criteria, because if they do, it should be inpatient, right? Meaning danger to themselves or others, so if they are inpatient, um, then it's, yeah, it is the mercy of. Wherever you can find a hospital that will take them and have the bed openings, um, at this point in time. The idea behind Crisis Residential stabilization and all of that is that we're taking people that. A, shouldn't be in inpatient units because they don't meet that level, but there's not another level of care, so they're just lingering there. Um, that where, if we place people where they're really supposed to be placed, there should be openings closer, meaning. You should actually have a bed opening in Mason City, because there should be people in Mason City that don't need that level of care that should be elsewhere. So that's the hope, that now, that's like a moving game, now everyone's got to move in the right condition for everything to shift. We're in that shifting game right now, where they're still building these crisis stabilization residential centers, so. As they're building that, we should be taking people out, plus education's a huge piece, we have to educate our providers. Even like Irelie Ball, even like our ITP providers, our psychiatrist and all of that, to say, guess what, guys? There's more than just emergency room and inpatient now, we need to remind them that they can, uh, i- issue these lower tiers of their, these areas of services. Once they start doing that, again, it should open up, but it should open up those, but to go back to what they're building in Sioux City right now. Is sub acute, and so there's two sub acutes that are the closest right now, well, one, Waterloo is the sub acute, and so that's a level of care. Where they're going to stay a little bit longer, they're going to have some detox probably in that piece. The men- the mental health and some medical issues, so they're going to require a little bit more supervision, um, medically than just. Here's your meds, let's do therapy, let's do group sessions, things like that, um, so that's the piece that's being built right now, and then Spencer. Um, they're, they're going to be doing that level of care as well, so there's the ability to have Waterloo, there'll be Saks City, and then it'll be Spencer. Um, for, again, that level of care, but not inpatient.
But again, like the thing again, the more, because, because you also get those, you know, those. Old school change can come very, very hard, you know, uh, people don't, people are not, not as open to change in some cases. And when you're looking at an inpatient, it's either like, they're going to keep them inpatient, or they're getting kicked out within twenty-four hours, like, see you later, it, it thrones. So, you know, and so that is what we're doing a lot of, is really, really educating. The, the, both the institutional crisis stabilization and the community-based crisis stabilization, because again. When you're looking at Turning Point out of Saks City, and you're looking at that three to five days. Like, we don't scream it out the top of our lungs, but we will let them, keep them in, you know, perhaps ten days, it's the absolute match, however. When you're looking at that period of time, that may be all that individual needs, I mean, we've got people that'll go there. You know, I'm going to give you a quick example, if there's somebody with ma- serious medical illness, and you're married to that individual. And you have children in the home, that can be very, very dysfunctional from time to time. And they can be stable for a very long period of time, and then all of a sudden, things are occurring, and they're not so stable. I've got somebody who will go to crisis stabilization once a year, gives the husband a break, gives the children a break. Gives the husband a break, gives the children a break. And actually, she really enjoys it too. It gives her the break, you know? And then it's just to tap into her, you know, supportive system too, you know, so. It it's just, it's this huge service that, you know, providers aren't used to dealing with. And it's like the more they can utilize this crisis stabilization, whether it's institutionalized or community-based. Again, you're gonna build trust. You're gonna see that. Maybe that's all that person needs. You know, eight days of crisis stabilization is gonna be more than forty-eight hours like inpatient, really. You know, for them to just do the turnaround and kick my ass. So so that's.
Your Sioux City trips were committals then.
Right.
We haven't done a Sioux City trip up until two years ago and then all of a sudden we started doing tons of Sioux City trips. And if it's a female, then I gotta put a matron in that car, so I'm taking two people on the road for a whole day. And I'm not that big. I I can't.
So I wonder if maybe we could have a follow-up about those cases and troubleshoot like. And it it's very well possible, like if they were experiencing, you know, psychosis or or suicidal behavior, there was no choice. So we had to do that, but maybe we could have. Offshooted them into something different. And we can maybe.
Through Mercy.
Yeah, yeah, Mercy or through us or.
I know we used Lamar's a couple of times and they were fantastic. The people that went over there really.
Okay.
Turned their lives around or even came out here.
And do you ever, another thing too is um transports. I don't know if these people, if you can use a secure transport, if they're safe enough. Um, the region will pay for those secure transports as well. So if you guys decide to use what is Central Iowa detention, is that what you use?
And I really bought that transport.
Yeah, then. Again, and that's that's up to you and your staff, you know, we get those. We get those occasionally for um and our board, actually, that's one thing I wanna go to our board this month. It's gonna be on our agenda. I wanna talk about, I've gotten a couple of questions on will the region pay for um sheriff pay? Or for deputy pay while they're transporting or just the mileage? So we're gonna have to cross that bridge. Um, here, because I've gotten a couple of requests um for those as well, and I don't know what to do with them yet. But. Um, but yeah, so if they are able to be in a secure transport. Um, using one of them, they can send the bill to us and we would pay. The only time we don't pay for a secure transport is if it's voluntary. I mean, if someone wants to voluntarily go, um, we'd like that to kind of be on them. But I mean, if it was a hardship, we we would obviously assist, but that's. Another option, but I mean, yeah, to go back to the root of it as well is it's it's a huge culture change we're asking people to do. And we're creating, and so we've had, um, I'd say the one that's utilized the most right now is Turning Point because it's most central. I mean, it's Sac City. It's not the best, but it's what we have. Um, and we had about ten people use it in the last year.
Well, they also transport. They will pick that individual up right from their home and they will actually bring them home. Upon discharge, no matter where they're at. So that is a very huge service.
Yeah. So I and a lot of it, I think, is that that educational piece of this is a whole new way to do things now. And even our um most. Season people forget, you know, and so um that's, you know, it's just trying to get them used to a different way. And again, it's education, um even to our physicians that prescribe. They need to know there's a different way than just inpatient now. And so it's educating them. Um, again, the system is being built and there's there's new players that everyone needs to be introduced to. So that's what we're really working hard to do. And again, that's why you hear them talk so much about outreach. I mean, outreach never ends because there's always something moving and changing and changing.
Well, and even the, you know, the more that they can utilize, whether it's community-based or whether it's institutional-based crisis stabilization. The more they can, they can get used to that idea and the more people can utilize that service. That is most definitely gonna cut down on hospitalizations. It's gonna cut down on committals. You know, it's gonna cut down on incarcerations. And first and foremost, you know, it's gonna get them a higher quality of life than they deserve. That's bottom line, you know, really, so.
And the hope is, well, we've been on this, ended on this note, the hope is that as we're developing um these locations. That because they are so new as far as, and when I say new, I mean, it's just a whole different level of care. It's a level of care. The state has created that they've never had before. Um, and so with that comes Medicaid reimbursements, figuring out how they're going to do that, what the what the laws look like with that. So it's been slow for providers in light of COVID, in shortage supplies and Medicaid reimbursements. All these services were really, really, they were mandated right before COVID hit. So everyone's been trying to build all these things during COVID with everything. So I think we're seeing a little bit, like. How cool would it have been not seeing, having COVID to see where we would have been um compared to where we are now? So, you know, I think we gotta, we gotta be mindful of that. But then at the same point in time, um, they're they're being built. And these are Medicaid services that after a period of time and they get moving. I I don't think it's gonna be uncommon to see other people wanna open up that are not being asked by regions to open up these level of cares and these services. Um, and have that backing because it'll just be Medicaid service. Why couldn't a hospital open up this level of care, have something food underneath their menu of service? It's it's new now, but it's not gonna be new forever, you know, so. Thank you for everything. I have. I brought with me as well, because who does not like um different things? I brought our mobile crisis magnets, so you guys can have copies of these. I brought some brochures. Um, so I'll leave them here. Um, these are, we give these out to all of our um. E E Rs, um things like that, but they're just really nice for, um, speaking of hospitals and things like that, people can have like our name. Um, so you can like take your post-it notes and things like that. So people in crisis will remember us, so. Leave an extra one here for you. Um, as well, until I have, yeah. So then I brought pens and things like that. I ordered these and because. Why not one more? I brought shirts as well. We ordered some shirts for different trainings and things like that. Um, so I brought shirts pretty well. I'm sorry, we have bright colors for a little. So if anyone would like a shirt, I have two colors. I have. Pretty much every size from medium up to three hats, so. I will, maybe I'll just pass on some no one else.
Thanks so much for having me.